Closed session, but we're back and we're ready to have our inaugural council meeting in the renovated auditorium. We've had a series of opening inaugural events over the last two weeks. I believe there were 11 performances. And it's great to have the community have an opportunity to use this facility before we, the council, come back in. This was always just kind of pretty much exclusively a council chambers and very difficult to use for other types of performances or uses. And so it's great to finally have a multi-use space. And so now we're glad to be back in. And we wanted to take this opportunity to thank the various people who helped us make this renovation of this space possible since this was all done with other people's money. And those other people are here this evening and we want to recognize them. We had great help from Representative Chris Van Hollen, who's represented here tonight by Karen McManus. And there were two economic development initiatives, one in 2006 and one in 2009 from the federal government. Senator Jamie Raskin is here. Delegate Heather Mazier is here. And representing Delegate Sheila Hickson. Oh, and perfect timing, Delegate Tom Hucker is here. And representing Delegate Sheila Hickson is Monica Ettinger. And so we wanted to thank our state delegates. I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize former Senator Idaho Rubin, who was very helpful in getting money in 2006. And all of the current representatives of District 20 in the hard-fought battle to make sure that Program Open Space money remained available for small indoor spaces. And that was a battle that kind of delayed us getting this whole project started just to make sure that the Program Open Space money was available. We also have tonight Barry Christie, who is here from Maryland Program Open Space. And we wanted to recognize Barry for all of the great work that he's done for so many years in making Program Open Space a great program and making it available to localities for use for such projects as this. And we really appreciate all your hard work. And finally, Jerry Stocks is here from Washington Adventist Hospital. And they provided money as well. And I also see Bob Jepson, who's Vice President of Adventist Health Care. And we really appreciate the help that you all provided on this project. It really made all of this possible. And so it's a great opportunity to say thank you to all of you. We do have some formal thank yous. We did feel that we, in these economic times, we've got little thank yous, but they're not framed.[220.68][220.68](Laughter). But we did want to say thank you. So maybe if you all want to come up on this side over here, and I can give you these, and then we can also then come over and cut the ribbon, which is a green ribbon in this green facility. And so if you all want to come up on the stairs on that side. Just hang on a second. I forgot. Just one second. I just also wanted to recognize some other people in the community who really helped make this possible. And I see Charlie Pills are here. And he and David Eisner really put a lot of effort into this and helped make all this possible. And I want to thank them as well. Well?
Great.
I only got three here. I don't know where. I'll hand you one to take it back.[286.44][286.44](Laughter).
No, once I get it, I keep it.
Oh, well. This is thank you to Representative Chris Van Hollen. And we really appreciate all the efforts.
Well, and he regrets he cannot be here. He wanted to very much. And he was happy to be a partner with the city, the state, Washington Adventist, our state delegation to make this all happen.
Thank you. And there's one for the four of you.
Excellent.[366.12][366.12](Laughter).
Does anybody want to say?
I maybe would have never left the council if it had looked this good.[375.81][375.81](Laughter).
I think it's beautiful and the acoustics are much better.
Much better. We don't have to turn off the AC what we want to talk about.
And there it is.
This is obviously the first long time I've been able to talk and be able to see a client's job.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Let's take a moment. Thank you. We really appreciate it. That was the final piece that had fallen into place. And I know we were on pins and needles waiting to see where open space could be used for an indoor facility.
We were pleased at being able to work with this renovation. But we also worked on the larger renovation of the community center when it was added to. And we worked very hard to make sure that we could get all the facilities covered by Program Open Space when you were doing that. So we were pleased to be partners with you.
And we really appreciate it. Barry Christie, thanks very much.[460.81][460.81](Applause). And Jerry Stocks from Washington Adventist Hospital. There's one for you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your contribution as well. I know that it was designated for a project for quite a while. And it was getting engineered over to this one and making sure that this was helpful in taking care of the community. So we really appreciate your efforts.
It's our pleasure. I do say I kind of miss the orange because it took me back to my childhood when I, in the '60s, when my mom and dad had orange shag carpet in their house.[495.12][495.12](Laughter). So I kind of miss that, but this is beautiful. This looks really, really nice. And it's great for the City Tacoma Park, and we're glad we were part of that. Thank you.
We're glad you were here to be part of it.
Great, terrific. Thank you.[509.22][509.22](Applause).
And we've got some scissors over here. And we can do a, I guess I'll call it a green garland cutting. And so if people just want to pick up scissors there. Three, four, five, six, seven. You may have, we may have to have two, we may have to have two hands on some scissors.
I'll do one. We'll share with someone.
I'll share. We can share.
Let me, gotta slide down a little bit. I gotta get in there too.
Get one in there. Get in here, Mayor.
I'm gonna make sure that this thing cuts.[552.82][552.82](Laughter). And let's pause for pictures for a second there. We got, come on, get in there, get in there.
One, two, and three.
Go. Yeah, it comes.[572.12][572.12](Laughter).
Mr. Mayor, I'm delighted that everything is new in the council chamber, except I see that our official peace delegate is here and the peace sign is back.[588.62][588.62](Laughter). Patty Lovelace is here.
And I see in the room, and I also wanted to thank Rick Schneider and Chris French, who, and I don't remember the name of your firm, the architect.
I Studio Architects.
I Studio Architects. And I also wanted to thank Jeff Schneider from Contract Video Specialists, who were responsible for the audio/video portion of this, which was funded through our cable capital fund, so that there was additional monies that went into it beyond the folks' recognized here. But it wasn't our money. It was from the cable franchise agreement that has to go for capital equipment. So that's what outfitted this room with the audiovisual stuff. So thank you all for your contributions, and we really appreciate it. And you're welcome to come back anytime. You're welcome to stay here this evening if you want to. We have to pass the second reading of our budget, which was a difficult process this year.
Please stay.
We might have another engagement.[666.02][666.02](Laughter).
Thanks, everybody.
I gotta ask, is there anything going on on those screens out there? All right, then.
The chair.
Now there's not, correct? Got to get used to this new technology. And I'm gonna shut this one down. It's up here, but it's not out there. So we have to get used to this new space with these new TV lights. It feels like we're in the headlights. But.
I'll get that fixed.[789.82][789.82](Laughter).
So the first thing on our agenda is council comments. Do my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Clay.
Well, it's kind of fun. Yes, I did actually. I noted both last week and this week when I was walking through the community center, through those back lots, that the bus is parked over the disabled access way. So people are coming along in that kind of, what do you call it actually, an OTBA compliant space? In the space that was intended to, for folks coming along with strollers and wheelchairs and the like along the backside of the parking lot there. And they wanted to come all the way across over to the newer part of the community center, like back along the library. The bus is parked right over that part of the walkway. And so to get around, then they have to go back out into the parking lot, which we, I think we're trying to avoid with that.
Okay. That's what I was saying.
I just want to say how delighted I am to be in the new auditorium. That's really all. And it will balance out the working on the budget, I hope. I was struck dramatically by the difference in sound quality in here and the comfort of the seats, the general layout. It's a real treat to be here, and I was glad we had a nice ceremony for it. Thanks.
Councilmember Wright.
Just two things. One is, I want to thank the, I think it's the city staff in one way or the other. I got a number of compliments on the quality of the plantings and how Old Town looks. I don't know if the city gardener is responsible for that, or if it's indirectly the Old Town Business Association's Design Committee, or whichever committee it is that would do plantings. But if it's that committee, it's still thanks to the city staff for recommending that we continue to fund OTVA and the good work that they do. So, thank you. And the second is a follow-up question I have to our parking lot and the inflatable balloon thing that's supposed to come up when the, when a 100-year flood happens or whatever it is. It still has steel plates over it, and I was, I'd asked a couple of council meetings ago about what the progress is on getting that fixed. Because although 100-year storms don't come along very often, they do come along once in a while. And just would be concerned that we'd spent all that money to have a system to deal with the many, many, we have many systems and things about this building to deal with that, an event of that level. But that one seems to be not operating right now. So I'm sort of curious about what is going on and when it will be fixed.
Hi, Councilmember Wright. I share your concern with the status of that. I don't have a date, or even a date that I can guess by which it will be repaired. The problem is a failure in design and implementation of that steel structure that covers the flood wall itself. So it's an issue that we have to take up with the original contractors that did the installation, or potentially even the design itself. I want to allay anyone's fears, though, in regard to the 100-year storm. If indeed a 100-year or more storm happened, there's not a concern of flooding in the parking lot. That wall is kind of a second level of protection. We have two 72-inch stormwater pipes underneath the parking garage. So that flood wall was actually to function in the event that something catastrophic occurred and those, both of those 72-inch pipes were unavailable to take any water. So they were blocked upstream, something catastrophic happened, and they could not take any stormwater flow. Then the flood wall would have come up to basically create a space in that parking lot that would remain dry as the floodwaters, oops, went past around them. So the likelihood of that occurring, of course, is minuscule at best for the entire capacity of those two 72-inch pipes to be unavailable. That being said, we're continuing to explore options. And it's certainly unsightly as it is right now. And I just share your concern with the status, and we'll continue to work on it until we get a resolution.
Yeah. I'm less concerned with the unsightly nature of it and more the fact that it's there. I know it's a, it sounds like a second failsafe, but it's there for a reason. And then, as we know, as what's going on in the Gulf of Mexico right now, strange disasters do happen and things fail. And I hate for us to be a victim of a catastrophic event and then have something that we could fix not work.
It's also a little bit dangerous because there's an open section on the street side.
We have two plastic barrels covering those sections with barricades right now. And of course, the steel plates are on the remaining pieces. And the steel plates are down with asphalt. They're, they weigh over 100 pounds each. They're, they're not going anywhere. But the flood balloon itself does not function with those steel plates.
Councilmember, do you have questions?
No questions. I just had a comment. Councilmember Wright, this is.
Yes.
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Snippers' appreciation of the great facility that we opened tonight, at least that the council opens tonight. It's been open for a while to, for performances. And it's also good to see, and I thank the many people who have come out tonight to see the new green roof and to see the dedication of the auditorium here. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'd just like to honor the occasion by saying that my point of reference is the azalea room. And this is better than the azalea room. I don't have to lean forward to see among my colleagues who is talking, or lean backwards and, or trip over all kinds of cables in order to exit a door. So this is a truly delightful space. The architects have done a wonderful job. And I think when citizens have a chance to see this, they're just going to be thrilled to pieces, as everybody says they are, have seen it so far. So we're very, very fortunate to have this kind of performance space. And I hope that in my duties, I'm up to the quality of the space.
Councilmember Robinson. No. What was that? Councilmember Wright.
I had a follow-up comment, yes.
I'm getting used to it.
So the other thing I just wanted to mention is there are many green features you can see in the room. And we experienced the green roof outside. But just also wanted to point out that we're operating, I think there's still sun out right now. So there's some electricity in this room being generated by the photovoltaic cells on the roof, which is very exciting. And I thank the mayor. I know the mayor did extra work with Congressman Van Hollen to get money to put those in. So that's an exciting feature you don't see, but, and we can't go up and walk on like the regular green roof, but another exciting green feature.
I believe there's even going to be a, some kind of quiz for kids in the community to find all the green features. Should be ongoing fun. If that's it for council comments, we can move along. There are no additional agenda items. I did want to give a brief scheduling update. I think some things have even changed twice since last week. A quick reminder that next Monday is Memorial Day, and so there will be no meeting either Monday or next Tuesday. If we get through the budget this evening, I think we're going to take a little break and a number of us will be happy to be not having to go through this again next week. The following Monday, June 7th, there is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the renovation of the public works facility, we hope. And also a resolution regarding use of city funds for purchase of polystyrene food service products. Then we have two work session items scheduled. The first is a discussion of Sligo Park Hill's Ritchie Community Traffic Access Restrictions. And the second one is discussion of Montgomery College Facility's master plan. Then we have the following Monday, June 14th, we have resolutions on both of those discussions, assuming that we are to the point where we can go forward with resolutions. Also that evening, the 14th, we have a discussion scheduled for the proposed policies and procedures for use of this space. The following Monday, June 21st, is Ward One night. That will wrap up our first run-through of ward nights. And I know Councilmember Wright is ready, willing, and able to bring forth a number of residents from Ward One. And we'll have a chance to listen to their concerns. We also have a presentation from the Police Department on their use of tasers, which we had been promised from when they started using this. We also have a discussion that night and a resolution for authorizing submission of legislative action requests to the Maryland Municipal League for next year's session in Annapolis. So if anybody has any ideas for any legislative action requests for either us or for MML, we need to get those into them by July 2nd. And then the final item scheduled for that night is the work session discussion of the proposed Tacoma Junction Task Force, which we had to push back a little bit. And finally, that last meeting in June, June 28th, is when the council will be at the Maryland Municipal League Convention in Ocean City. So there will be no meeting that evening as well. So that gets us through June. The next item is, just wanted to note for the record, a, let's see here, up there, the mayoral proclamation for Play Day in the City of Tacoma Park. And this is in conjunction with the Play Committee and the, similar to the Play Day that we had last year. This year, Play Day in the City is officially declared as September 25th of this year. So we look forward to the festivities for the Second Annual Play Day in the City. Next item is public comment period for anybody who would like to make any comments on items not on this evening's voting agenda. So if you have any comments on the tax rate or any of the budget items, if you can hold your comments to those items, and anybody who wants to speak. And if I can just note that in the, in this new space with this new technology, I have a new timer, and I'm going to try and, given our recent history with various people speaking, I'm going to try and hold true to the three minutes. So Mr. Lovelace always manages to wrap up his comments right before the three minutes are up. And I'm going to hold everybody to that. So Mr. Lovelace, go ahead.
Yep, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Your official peace delegate. I want to welcome the city council into this new city chambers in the auditorium. And I want to thank Terry Siemens for bringing me over here tonight. And I want to thank the City of Tacoma Park for all the support they've given me. And also, I want to mention a couple of things coming up. On June the 5th, we're having a peace parade in Washington DC down at Freedom Plaza. It starts at, starts at 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. That's on a Saturday, June the 5th, the peace parade in Washington DC. The second thing is, is June the 10th, between 8:00 and 9:00 p.m., we're having, in front of the Green Belt, the Green Belt Community Center, we're having a candlelight vigil against torture. That's June the 10th in Green Belt, Maryland, at the Green Belt Community Center between 8:00 and 9:00 p.m. I also would like to ask the city council if they could join other cities in boycotting Arizona, the new law they've got, anti-immigrant law. I suppose you guys have heard about this. You know, like now you can be arrested driving wild Hispanics. It's a form of racial profiling going on. You know, that they can pull you over just because you, you know, look like an illegal immigrant. And they're giving the immigrants a really hard time down there, that they're, they're not allowing them to work, they're not allowing them to get benefits, they're not allowing them anything. They're really giving them a hard time. And several cities have adopted boycotts on the, on the state of Arizona, like tourism and stuff, unnecessary travel to Arizona and unnecessary trade with Arizona, until they, until they overturn that barbaric law against our immigrant brothers and sisters. Because I want you people to know, we are all illegal immigrants. This land was stolen from the Native American brothers and sisters, don't forget. So we are all illegal immigrants, when you think about it. And Arizona is included. They're illegal also. And I'd like to ask the city council if they could adopt a resolution of some kind to bring up a boycott on the state of Arizona and encourage other cities to it. When you go to the MML, if you could also encourage other municipalities around the state of Maryland to adopt the resolutions against that. Because nothing's going to get done if we don't do anything about it. And that's the, I guess that's the first thing I've asked the city to do in the new auditorium. And I'd like to see if you guys can really do it. And I know you can do it. Thank you for letting me share. Thank you very much. Peace.
Thanks very much, and your timing was impeccable. Oops.
Three seconds.
Oh, my goodness. Boy, I'm getting used to this thing.[1752.62][1752.62](Laughter).
I'm Charlie Pills, 7425 Buffalo Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And to the mayor, the council members, the city manager, city staff, there are so many people to thank for the renovation of the auditorium. I'm a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission, and I joined the commission several years ago partially to, I had this vision of seeing this room transformed. I have to tell you, the results are far better than anything I imagined. By creative use of funding, you know, it's a combination of federal, state, funds, they, using some of the cable, commission cable agreement funds, this was magnificent. We've had a week of performances that included bands, spoken word, poetry, theatrical presentations. I know several of the members of staff and the council were here. I think this is a terrific legacy and you all are to be thanked for your foresight in going ahead with this and making a lead project and incorporating as many green features you could. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ms. City Manager, I'm Ron Wiley from the executive, from the Adventist Community Services, and I want to add my commendations to your good judgment and beyond that, for your effectiveness in being able to make it happen, as many people have pointed out. First of all, I want to thank each of you for your support for this fiscal year for the Piney Branch Pool. The $10,000 that you appropriated is very helpful as we come to the end of this fiscal year. I also want to thank certain individuals who have been outstanding in their support of the pool from the very beginning, back in fiscal year '09, council member Terry Siemens, Susan Katmiller, Kay Daniels-Cohen, Deborah Hademan, as well as George Leventhal, Valerie Irvin, and Mark Eric of the county council. Because of their help and support of many others, tonight I'm able to inform you that, notwithstanding our appreciation for your $50,000 for the pool capital improvement fund in fiscal year '09, and your $10,000 appropriation this fiscal year for operations, I have recently informed George Leventhal and others at the county council that we are requesting absolutely no subsidy for fiscal year '11, and we are hereby informing you that we are not requesting any subsidy from city taxpayers for the same period. In last year's county council budget hearings, I was brash enough to indicate that I foresaw the distinct possibility for fiscal year '11, that we could manage this facility in a way that satisfied the community but required no county subsidy. That brashness is now a potential reality. Ask not what the Tacoma Park City Council can do for you, ask what you can do for the Tacoma Park City Council. In the light of the severity of city and county fiscal year '11 budgets, which are, as I understand it, considering furloughs for vital public employees, and as I understand it, that's a historic first for the city of Tacoma Park, I simply cannot in good faith request a subsidy for the pool, when I believe that we can continue to carefully manage it without any subsidy in much the same way as we have this fiscal year. Even though the sums are small, we feel that there's a degree of meaningful symbolism in our position, and we invite all county and city entities, individuals not-for-profits and proprietary organizations, to join us in demonstrating our support for county and for you all as leaders who must make the required budget cuts necessary to remedy the unfortunate current circumstance and to manage in a way that will assure that our present predicaments are not replicated again. Let me, trying to comply with all this nice technology, let me just say that we're optimistically negotiating for the summer months. We have some proposals from camp directors to use our pool, and we think that next year we're going to be able to open the pool during school hours for three targeted groups, seniors, parents of toddlers, and outpatient physical therapy patients. So, we think those are new revenue sources, and with that, I'll be glad to take, there's a couple other paragraphs there, but I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
Any comments, Councilmember Wright?
You know, I would just say huge thank you to you and your staff for the energy and creativity you've shown to persevere in a situation where other entities were unable to do what you've done and continue to provide a great service to our community. So, I very much appreciate it, and I very much appreciate your acknowledgement of the tough budget times that both the county and the city are in and to step forward and, as you say, do more with less, and we very much appreciate that.
Thank you very much, you're my candidate for Secretary of State.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay. City manager, have any comments?
Yeah, just a brief update on the public works facility renovation. We opened bids last Thursday and we were very pleased to get nine bids. We are in the process of reviewing those. One of the other pieces, I just have information I wanted to mention to the council relative to the project, this is sort of a repeat, is the state is still continuing to struggle to get through the bond rating process with Moody's. We've talked about before, the downturn in the credit markets has created sort of a hyper-attention to all the municipalities or counties that would be participating in that. It's unclear at this time, I think whether or not the state will be able to get the local government infrastructure program financing kind of off the floor before we really need to move forward. So, Ms. Brooks, our finance director, and I are examining some other options, and we'll keep the council apprised as that moves forward. The only other thing I just wanted to mention to the council is just to call to your attention that there is some supplemental information regarding the budget that was distributed this evening.
And that's the salmon sheet?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for City Manager, Councilmember Wright?
I just had a question related to the financing. Are the other options, us potentially going directly to the bond market, and are we seeing, you're hearing about, you know, mortgage rates going down further because of the crisis increase and people fleeing the euro, and whether that, for a municipality in a state that's, has actually good fiscal situation, whether we're seeing anything advantageous in the bond market?
No, in fact, I think one of the difficulties that the state is having is essentially the bond insurance market essentially has tanked, which is sort of what the state had relied upon in part to secure the rating on its bonds. They are now having to go through the rating process, it's a little bit of a different animal since it's under the umbrella of the Housing Department of the state, and certainly there's different assessments about the credit worthiness of the various prospective participants. Typically, and I've been through, I've worked in municipalities that have actually gone through the rating process, I don't think that would probably be advantageous for the city for a number of reasons. I think one of the things that we're examining is probably some either private placement, bank financing, or something of that nature, is probably more viable for us.
And do you have any sense of what that might do for the timing of the project?
I had expected, Moody's internal credit review was supposed to have given a preliminary rating to the state bonds last week. I had sent an email on Friday when I didn't hear anything. I do know that the, kind of internally, the state has said if they didn't get a certain level of rating, they probably would not be proceeding with an issuance this spring. I think if we decide to go the other route, it's a matter of basically taking bids, I have been talking to a company that does work with a lot of the cities about actually assisting us in that process. Actually getting bids from banking institutions is fairly simple, so I think if I don't get a sense from the state yet this week that this is moving forward, we will probably go ahead and perhaps retain a company to help us with the bidding process. I'd like to try to get the financing in place before I ask the council to actually approve a contract.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Schultz.
Barbara, we went that route you just described with the funding for the, our obligation to the state pension, where we got a bid, I think it was SunTrust.
That's correct.
And that was an interest rate, I believe, in excess of 3%?
It was, I believe, 3.59%.
Right. How would that compare, that kind of a rate, if that's the rate we might get for, say, the Department of Public Works construction work, how would that rate compare with what you would have anticipated going through the state of Maryland's bond process?
I would need to go back and look, Councilmember Schultz, I don't believe I brought the amortization schedules they had given me, those were certainly preliminary pending the sale of the bonds. My guess would be the market would probably look more favorably actually at infrastructure bonds, the situation with the pension is kind of an odd animal, as you may recall, we got two bids. The company that I have considered maybe doing work with is also familiar with the kind of Build America Bonds, which is part of a federal government interest subsidy. So, there's some differences between whether or not we were to go out for tax-exempt bonds, which is what we did for the pension plan, or to actually issue a call for taxable bonds, and then the city essentially gets the benefit of the Build America interest credit. So, I think that's not something I'm entirely familiar with, and I think someone might be able to help us. But certainly rates have stayed relatively stable, I guess we're all probably familiar with in terms of if you have any savings accounts, pretty much you're getting nothing on them, so.
Yeah.
The interest rates should, you know, even 3% would be pretty attractive to a lot of folks.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
We're now ready to move on to our regular meeting and the first agenda item, which is second reading ordinance adopting the FY '11 tax rate. Would somebody like to move that?
Move it.
Second.
Move by Councilmember, please, second by Councilmember Siemens, is there discussion of that? Councilmember Wright?
So, we're proposing .58 cents, sorry, .58 cents per 100, correct?
That's correct.
And that's slightly up from the constant yield tax rate, which would be 56.63 cents?
That's correct.
And if you do the math, that's sort of like a 2% increase or something like that?
I think the overall revenue generated, I think, is 2.4% more than what the constant yield rate would generate.
So, it's kind of in the neighborhood of the rate of inflation. What did the county do with their tax rate? Did they increase their tax rate at all even to deal with kind of?
I believe they did, I don't know if, yeah, the vote will be Thursday.
But do we know what's on the table even, whether they, because they've been very resistant, they're saying they're not increasing taxes at all, right?
I just know that I think it is a tax rate increase, I know there is some kind of charter ceiling that they did not want to exceed. Suzanne, I may know more than?
Yeah, I did look at this and I'm trying to remember, I think they, I think they have up to a six cents tax increase on the table. Their constant yield was the same as their current, they didn't have a change on that.
Thank you.
And they, there was some other area where they were limited by what they can do, so they went to the areas that they could increase taxes, which was things like the energy tax, which they raised 85%.
Right, there is, and once again, Suzanne may be more familiar, there is some provision in the county charter that requires, I think, kind of a supermajority vote by the county council to exceed, and their agreement, I think, going into their budget processes, they did not want to go to that place.
Right, and because of the amendment last year that was approved by the voters, that supermajority had to be all known.
That's correct.
So, I would say that, just to acknowledge that we are increasing taxes slightly, I know there's been requests by some individuals that we increase taxes further and cut less, and there's been requests by people not to increase taxes at all. I think this slight increase is not something I'm totally in favor of, but I think given the entire situation overall, it's, and it's basically at the rate of inflation, and given that we have made significant cuts in staff, I'm okay with the 58 cents per 100.
And I'll just say that I'm comfortable with the 58 cents as well. One of the things that I think about is going forward to next year, what we may be facing, we keep hearing from everybody that it's going to be worse. I know that the general rule of thumb is that revenues to local governments tend to lag about two years behind the economy, so whatever we were seeing in the economy two years ago is what we could be dealing with now. And so, I can, I can see that next year, our revenue situations could be worse, when you also look at the, what the effect of the, I don't remember what to call it, but the, well, but also the 10% limit on increases in assessments per year, and how a number of those, that there are still residents who are seeing the 10% increases rolling through this year, that's why our assessments, our total assessments after that still went up, that there will be many fewer of those next year, so that we will be seeing, I would imagine, a, instead of a increase in the assessable base for next year, we will see a decrease in the assessable base. And so, if we were to face exactly the same situation as we do this year, except it's next year, and that difference in our assessable base are, we have a good potential for the constant yield rate to be higher, not lower, next year. And so, just, just to keep pace with what we're doing this year, we would have to raise the rate next year. And I just, I think this is the responsible thing to do, is to keep the rate where it was last year, where it is this year, once we vote on it, and it'll give us a little bit better position going forward to what I anticipate will be the difficulties with the budget next year. So, I'm comfortable with 58 cents. Councilmember Robinson?
I also, I'm also accepting 58 cents, I can, I can vote for that. I do want to note that we need a thorough analysis of the risks that we face into the future, particularly systemic or structural kinds of risks. This year, we spent nearly a million and a half dollars on pension funds that the state told us we were in arrears on, or that we could pay in advance and be in better shape. And I'm glad that we floated that bond and paid that in advance because it saved us money, but spending a million and a half isn't exactly saving money when you didn't anticipate it. And that was a risk then, and that particular risk continues, and I'm looking forward to a detailed conversation about that and other risks that we face this coming year. And an analysis of how we're, how we've been treated financially in this downturn and in this difficult time, both by the county and by the state. As far as the state goes, we were, we became subject to a 90%, I believe it is, decrease in a certain funding level called the highway user funds, and those are funds that are given to us by the state to maintain our roads. So, 90% of the road funds have been cut through the state, from the state, and those road funds come from a variety of places. One of the places is gas tax. So, people who use our roads pay gas tax, and that money goes to the state, and typically they've given it back to us so that we can maintain the roads that people who drive, drive on. They, the state cut their own budget by about 15%, so to pass on 90% cuts to us is not exactly, I would say, fair or kosher. And in fact, the Maryland Municipal League, which we're a part of, is, and is starting to talk about the priorities that the league itself and the municipalities in Maryland have as regards to the state. And I'm hopeful that the priority of restoring that highway user, the highway user, the local, the funding for us at the local level from the gas taxes will be restored and that we can count on our elected officials at the state level to, to help us out in that when it comes to next year. So, that's something that we can do at the higher level, and again, we'll, we'll need to look at what we can do at our very own level as the budget process gets back into play next year, which I suspect will be much earlier. So, that was a long way of saying I can accept the 58 cents.
And just as a, as a quick synopsis of those fund levels that we've had seen reductions in from both the county and the in from both the county and the state, I believe it's fair to say that the state reduced us by about $600,000 and the county by about $500,000 in the end. Is that, are those pretty accurate figures?
The state was right around $600,000. With the county and tax duplication payments, it was $450,000, and then there were just some reductions in, some that were property tax-based.
Right.
Probably in the ballpark.
Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mayor. In past years, I have advocated for maintaining the constant yield tax rate and not increasing the rate, and yet this year, I'm willing to, supporting the proposal on the table tonight for a slight increase in the tax rate because of the severe budget situation we're in. And not just because we have serious problems, but because we have asked our staff to make reductions so that we can address the shortfall we had this year. And I think that rather than, than look for the staff to bear the entire burden, we do have to ask the taxpayers of the city to bear some of that burden. But I think that reducing the staff and asking other staff to do more work to make up for the staff that's not going to be with us next year is not the only solution we should be looking for. I think that the, increasing taxes, again, is not the entire solution. I think we, we at some point also have to ask the taxpayers to look at, accept a level of services less than what the city's been able to provide in the past. I think that as we finish tonight's discussion, we're going to have to, to look for ways to save additional money, and some of that is going to have to be service cuts. And I think as we look forward, as Mayor Williams said, to much more difficult years, maybe next year and maybe the year after, I think we've got to start reconsidering what level of service that we want here in Tacoma Park, and how we balance that against the taxes that we pay. So I'm supportive of this, but this isn't the end of the discussion.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Regarding the tax rate discussion, I, I think it's a, I want to try and help citizens understand some of the trade-offs that we're making here in these, these decisions. Obviously, as a city council, we have, you know, the responsibility to consider raising the tax rate even above the 58 cent mark, or keeping it where it is. But this year, the city council is basically deciding to, to do something else. What that something else is, is that we have chosen, rather than raise the tax rate, to try to raise fees that we charge citizens for different services, such as perhaps raising fees for recreation programs, or refuse collection, or tree permits, or, and, and so on. We've also opted to cut back hours, say, for the library. We've opted to reduce our payroll by freezing salaries and by reducing, eliminating some positions. But next year, if we're facing the same kind of a crunch, we will basically have sort of said, well, last year for fiscal 2011, we opted not to raise tax rates, but to instead make all these other changes. Next year, if we're faced with the same situation, we won't have that choice. We'll have to raise taxes because we can't go back and continue to lay off more people and raise fees. So in other words, our decision this year is to try to do what we've, the current budget that we're looking at here, is to try to solve this funding shortage by doing a multiplicity of little things to close the funding gap. And really, what it is, it's, it's a trade-off, to do that as opposed to increasing the, the general tax rate. And we could have done just the opposite. We could have said, oh, we don't want to make any of these changes, and we'll just raise the, the general tax rate this year. But next year, if we're still facing this same problem, as it sounds like we will be, but we can always hope for better, we're, you know, we won't be able to go back to these particular wells again and, and get money. I find it hard to imagine how to, how to reduce our, our payroll more than we already have. So in, in opting not to raise our taxes, increase the tax burden, this year, we've opted to raise fees and do some of these other things. And that's fine, I have no problem with that. But I think we just need to understand that we are making some decisions that more or less limit our choices and what we're going to be able to do in the following fiscal year if we are faced with these same choices, with these same deficit issues. That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to sort of shed some light on what our options are this year and as we look forward into the future. Thanks.
And if I can just add that, I think one of the important things to do going forward is for us to find the way that will be the best way to have discussions among ourselves and with the residents of the city about how we, how we think about the services that the city provides, the service levels that we provide, and what we might want to consider going forward, where the priorities are for people if we, if we get down to some real hard choices about what kinds of services we provide, what those, what those should be, what levels those should be at, and to have those discussions in a, in a structured way that is the most helpful to understand what we need to do going forward, and to have those discussions sooner rather than later, so that as we move forward to next year, that we are able to say that we understand where we, where we might need to go, and that residents of the city understand some of the reasons for that and feel that they've had input into that in some pretty focused discussions about how we might go forward with that. I'm not sure what the best method is, whether it's focus groups, or forums, or how we might do that, but I think we need to discuss that after we've finished with this budget and we're ready to go forward and have those discussions. So I see that as a continuation of this year's budget process, getting ready for next year's budget. Any other comments on the tax rate? Okay, is there any public comment on tax rate?
Try and be quick. I guess I'll reserve my comment to sort of narrow more, like normally, I'm talking to you guys globally, talking with regard to the entire union, and I just wanted to speak about three specific positions. Again, I'm always struck with how little it takes to make a large difference. If the city was willing to raise even a half cent more on the amount that they're willing to raise currently, which is the equivalent for a house that costs $300,000, that would give you an additional, that would cost an additional $15 a year for that house. Or on a house that's worth $700,000, that would be an increase of $35, all right? That would enable us to keep the library open those six additional extra hours. There was a quote I heard recently that stated that to cut a library service in a recession is equivalent to cutting the army in a time of war. My understanding is, you know, it's Tacoma Park, we might not, you know, balk about cutting our army, for instance. But here, what we're talking about is kids in the summertime who lack something to do, waiting until perhaps 2 o'clock in the afternoon for the library to open. If you don't catch a kid early enough, that kid will find something else to do with their time. Okay? And here, libraries are essentially providing job training, free information, they're providing resume books, they're providing computer services where people can go online and apply for jobs, and produce revenue for the city ultimately, in terms of their ability to, you know, earn a living and perhaps buy houses and things of that nature. I don't believe that we need to cut our intellectual army that provides these services for kids. Additionally, I wanted to talk about the cut in the city staff, the front desk staff. One of the cuts that was, that was proposed was that we cut a position that translates from Spanish to English for not just the front desk, but for all departments. If someone calls on the phone and nobody can understand in their department, they transfer it to the front desk staff, and this is the person who does that translation. And they also translate documents for the city. And I sincerely don't think that this is something that the city needs to cut back on, because we have to sort of understand that we're a multicultural city with a large proportion, a growing proportion of Spanish residents who need these services. So again, I'd speak to you, if you could just look at that half cent increase, it could have a massive difference in the quality of life and ultimately in the value of our community. So that's basically it. So I thank you. But just briefly, I understand as a council, as a union person, I was telling Councilmember Snapper previously, that you sort of get into this position simply because you raised a hand and asked a question once, or made a good point in a meeting, and someone said, you, you're the guy, speak for me. Our garbage men can't speak for themselves a lot of times. Some of them can, as you've seen. But people come to me and ask me to, to come to you and essentially make it clear to you that we don't come here and complain, okay? You rarely see our faces. I call them ninjas because they get their work done and you don't see them, okay? But all I can do is, for myself and treat you, to look at your, your conscience and basically say, in Tacoma Park, we don't need to lead the race to the bottom, and I understand you're not, you're raising taxes somewhat, but in this period of great restructuring elsewhere, we don't necessarily have to follow the leads to other people. What we do have to do is essentially look at our moral choices, that we're willing to pay more for organic food, we're willing to pay a little bit more to preserve the services that provide for these remarkable housing values, okay? So that's basically it.
Thanks very much. We appreciate your taking the time to do that and to volunteer your time to be in a leadership position in the union. Any other public comment? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Will a court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The next item is the second reading ordinance, oh, first. Would somebody like to move that we convene as the stormwater management board?
No.
Second.
I'll let you figure that out. There were about four voices at once. You pick. So now, would somebody like to move the second reading ordinance adapting the FY11 stormwater budget?
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Clay and seconded by Councilmember Wright.
Robinson.
Oh, Robinson. The acoustics are so good in here, the voice just went off somewhere else. Okay, it's on the floor for discussion, any discussion about the stormwater budget. Okay, I'll just point out, since sometimes people tend to forget this, that one of the things that's funded by the stormwater budget is the street sweeper, and that's one of the things that we're getting this year, making the capital expenditure. Some people say, oh, well, maybe you don't need the street sweeper, but we do need that to meet the various stormwater regulations that we have to comply with. So that's one of the reasons that we do that. This is, the stormwater budget has been funded in the past by part of the tax rate, but it's now a fee, and that's not changing this year. Is there any public comment on the second reading adapting the stormwater budget? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote as well. Will a court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes as well. Final item on our agenda for this evening is second reading ordinance adapting FY11 budget. Somebody like to move the budget?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Is there discussion on the budget? Does the city manager want to first go through the additional information that we've gotten this evening in the salmon sheet?
Yeah, it would probably be helpful just to go through the changes that have been made since first reading, because obviously they're considerable. We're not usually seeing this much redlining at this stage in the budget process. Over the past few weeks, we had discussed a number of ways of modifying the budget while we awaited the county council's decision. The council, at the end of those discussions, had basically indicated support for a combination of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions that were in the neighborhood at that time of about $211,000, more or less. The second reading ordinance that is before the council this evening incorporates all of those items with one modification, which had to do with the installation of new streetlights. My sense in listening to the council comments was that the council as a whole wanted to preserve some portion of the $20,000 that we typically allocate for the installation of new streetlights, so I did not cut 100% of that item, I cut it by 50%. That obviously did not close the $300,000 budget gap that was created by the action of the county council on Thursday, and saying that, I guess it's sort of a good news, bad news, while it was painful to lose $300,000, the alternative was losing $600,000. And obviously, there were a number of county council members who, I think, worked very diligently and chose to restore funding to the municipalities over other priorities, and I think we owe those county council members our gratitude for doing that. The situation could have been a lot worse. What I did between last week and this week in light of the county council decision and the stated intent of the council last week not to raise the tax rate was to look for other ways to close the remaining $100,000 gap, and I'll just kind of touch on those Probably the most significant portion of that gap, as proposed, would be, would be closed by relying on more cash funding for the public works facility as opposed to bond financing. What has been discussed up until this evening is to bond $2 million of the $3 million construction cost. After discussing this with Ms. Brooks, our director of finance, and in light of the council's prior discussion about unreserved fund balance, Ms. Brooks and I took a look at how to finance that project, and we are proposing this evening that the project be financed in equal parts by bond financing and by cash, which would essentially draw down the cash reserves by an additional $500,000, and by extension, reduce the debt service payment. So that would be the biggest portion of how I would propose to close that gap. I don't think there should be any concern on the part of the council in terms of the city's financial stability by doing that. I think as we talked about last week, I guess, it seems like an eternity ago, I, I do think that's an appropriate use of unreserved fund balance, which is to go to capital projects. And I think certainly as we go forward, not knowing what next year is going to look like, reducing our debt service payments makes sense to Ms. Brooks and to myself. Some of the other items the council may want to have a little bit more discussion about, we did take a look at some user fees. These were probably things that maybe should be looked at on a more systemic basis, but certainly out of crisis sometimes comes finding the time to do those things. Before the council this evening is a second reading ordinance that contemplates increases in user fees in a number of areas. Those would include tree-related permit fees, some different assumptions about revenue to be generated from the rental of the space that we sit in this evening, an increase in multifamily unit refuse collection charges, and then on the expenditure side, as was noted by Mr. Burbank, some proposed reduction in operating hours for the Tacoma Park library. Mayor, do you want to go through these items in more detail, or do you want to have an opportunity for the council to discuss them?
I guess, I think it would be, well, a little bit. I guess, I think it would be, well, a little bit more detail on them since we haven't seen them before.
Sure.
Would be helpful because I think if you don't do that first, there's going to be the questions anyway, so.
Okay. The city code actually states what the application processing fee is for both tree permits and tree protection plan applications. I had asked the public works director if she could sort of go back and do some calculations in terms of what it actually requires in terms of staff time to process those permit applications. I would note that that $25 essentially is a single application fee. There is no limit on the number of trees that an applicant can put on a single application. And the practice of the public works department has actually been to essentially waive the fee, refund the fee, whatever terminology you want to use, in the case of a tree waiver where the tree is deemed to be hazardous or actually dead. There is actually no specific language in the code regarding that waiver. Any change in the processing fee above the $25 would require council action depending on the vote this evening. We would work with the city attorney's office to actually craft that language. Clearly, last week, truthfully, was spent mostly on trying to salvage our tax duplication payment. We don't have a specific proposal this evening, but certainly there were assumptions kind of that were behind all of these revenue generation items, so these are almost more conceptual ideas, if you will. But I think the revenue projections that were put forward on the second reading ordinance are reasonable based on these assumptions. The public works director has conservatively estimated that it costs almost $50 to process any tree permit application and considerably more time is involved with a tree protection plan. What staff will likely recommend is that we have a $50 processing fee for a tree permit application and a tree protection plan permit application fee somewhere in the range of $75 to $100. Obviously, the number of permit applications will vary from one year to the next, so it's hard to have a fixed number. But if the council is open to raising fees in this area, we do think it's a reasonable assumption that we would generate an additional $7,500 from this revenue source. Do you want to deal with each one, Mayor, or just keep going through them?
Might as well just keep going through.
Okay. When we put together the initial proposed budget, truthfully, we did not assume much cost recovery from the use of this auditorium. I think historically, and when I say council, I'm not necessarily saying this council, but probably every council that has sat on a dais since I've been here, truthfully, has been somewhat reluctant to set use and rental fees at a market rate. So, the budget that I initially submitted to the council assumed minimal cost recovery of only $2,500 in revenue to be generated from the space. We did retain a CUDC, who was actually a subcontractor to iStudio, the project architect, to do some additional work. As the council, I believe, is aware, there is kind of an unofficial auditorium committee that has met with staff. That unofficial committee has been comprised of members of the Arts and Humanities Commission as well as the Recreation Committee. What we are proposing tonight, and it is not a specific fee structure, but that the assumption be that there would be additional revenue generated from the space beyond $2,500. Based on some conversations with certain parties that I don't want to name, there appears to be some strong interest in entering into some long-term lease agreements for this space. We took the information provided by CUDC, looking at comparable spaces and even at a relatively low non-profit rate, if we were to enter even into one or two long-term lease arrangements for the space, we believe it would be reasonable that we would generate another $10,000 in rental income from the space. Refuse collection charges, this is another user fee that is actually spelled out in the city code. This is not single-family homeowners, this is a fee for multifamily dwelling units. We only do pickups from buildings that have anywhere from two to 12 units. There is no fee for the first dwelling unit that would be comparable to what we do for single-family homeowners. But currently, there is a charge of $115 that is assessed for each additional dwelling unit. Majority of the multifamily buildings in the city are fairly small, I think as most of you know. In looking at the kind of billing roster provided by the finance department, you know, there are a few buildings that have 11 units that receive service from the city. They're not required to receive service from us if they feel they can get a better deal from a private haul or they have the option to do that. This fee, for whatever reason, has actually not been adjusted since the mid-1990s. In looking at our generally, what we calculate for a per household cost, and this is something the council talked about in the latter part of last year and this year, as you may recall, the actual per household cost for sanitation service, if we were to charge a homeowner, is over $200. In talking with the public works director, we do believe it's reasonable to try to phase this fee back up to a more kind of market level, if you will, over a period of time. We are proposing that the $115 fee be adjusted to $143 per dwelling unit for fiscal 11, and that would generate, if accepted by the council, about $15,000. Those are-
How much, I'm sorry, how much was that?
About $15,000.
Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, truthfully, it became very difficult, I think as the council itself has talked about. I don't think anyone really has a clear sense at this time what services residents in our community are willing to accept in terms of service reductions in regard to the budget that I initially submitted to the council. Certainly, a lot of the emphasis was on reducing staff positions and things of a personnel nature. And as I stated when I presented my budget in early April, that was not a decision I made lightly and certainly in full recognition of what I was asking from our very fine city staff. We have also originally proposed closing some hours for this building. We've actually, the council has tentatively approved before, increases in other user fees. I think at this stage in the game, it's really a matter of where the council feels that your constituents are willing to accept some service reduction. In talking to the staff, we could go to a number of places to do that. What I proposed to the council as part of the second reading ordinance is some reduction in library hours. Whether that's the place the council feels it's comfortable going is obviously a matter of your discretion. But what I have proposed is the elimination of the remaining library shelver position. Certainly, that will be, create a burden on other members of the library staff. Ms. Robbins indicated during her budget presentation that her long-term goal was to try to establish a more formal volunteer corps, but certainly, and I would agree with Ms. Robbins' assessment, that that is not likely to happen over the course of one year where you're going to replace 30 hours of staff time. So, I think she appropriately indicated to me that if that position were to be eliminated, there would likely be some reduction of library hours. She and her staff, I think, spent considerable time trying to look at utilization patterns, trying not to disrupt their very successful children's programs that take place every Tuesday and Thursday mornings. So, what would be proposed is a six-hour reduction in library hours, so that would happen on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. And instead of opening at noon, the library would open at 2:00 in the afternoon on those days.
And what would be the fiscal impact of that?
I'd say it's about $15,000.
Thank you.
And I think I already covered the public works facility renovation financing.
And how much was that? I didn't understand from the right up here.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Stevens, in terms of the public works facility renovation?
Yes.
It would reduce, I estimate, because obviously we have not sold the bonds yet, but my assumption is it would reduce the debt service cost by about $50,000.
Okay, maybe if there are any questions on those additional new items, maybe we would do those first. Councilmember Snipper and then Councilmember Clay.
Yes, I have lots of questions, but one in particular, could you, could you tell me what the unrestricted reserve percentage is now?
Again, he asked me the one question, Councilmember Snipper, I did not calculate. What I can share as an alternative to that is, as proposed in the second reading, the unreserved portion of the general fund fund balance would be roughly 4.27 million. That would be down by about $609,000 from what I originally submitted to the council. And that's primarily attributable to, obviously, the reduction in fund balance for the public works facility and also the expectation that we would withdraw money from fund balance for the Ethan Allen resurfacing.
Do you have other questions on those items? Councilmember Clay?
So, I guess my first comment, I'll start at the top, the tree-related permit, because I understand charging what it costs us. I just think as a general comment, I'm getting a lot of feedback from constituents now about our tree policy. And one of the comments, I think, has been pretty consistent is that they would like some, some balance around for service and assistance and information provision. I think people are looking actually for more guidance. And we have one arborist, and I know it's a challenge, but I just wanted to put that out there. So, we're going to put a message out that we're going to double the permit cost at the same time when most of the commentary that I'm getting is that they want more support. So, I don't know if the answer is we have to triple the cost and hire another person or you know what it is, but that's the feedback that I'm getting.
Yeah, if I may not to answer a question with a question, but I've worked in other cities that have had tree ordinances and I think every arborist that I've worked with since I've been here tries to offer some general advice, but I don't think it's, you know, I've never worked in a city that actually views itself as replacing private arborist services and viewing the role of your city arborists as keeping people from having to gotten higher in arborists for their own assessment of trees on their own property. I do appreciate the comment and I've heard it myself, but-
So, I'll respond with a question, is, do the other cities then that you've worked in have a tree ordinance that is as comprehensive as this city's tree ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's interesting. Auditorium rental question, your definition of long-term is what?
I think that can be certainly set by any lessee agreement. There is one individual that staff has had some conversations with who currently hosts a concert series in another municipality in Montgomery County and has expressed an interest in actually moving that concert series to Tacoma Park. I would think for most people to make that kind of move, I don't think it's in perpetuity, but would probably be looking for some multi-year commitment would be my guess.
Like two years, five years, 10 years?
Probably definitely less than five.
Okay.
And if I can just, I know a little bit about that proposal and I know it's for basically 40 nights a year.
Okay. My, the reason I asked is just, we're going to be figuring out what the uses are, what the competing interests are, what the market rates are.
Right.
So, okay, more complex question about refuse collection charges. So, if I own a two-unit building in the city, I pay property taxes and, just like single-family homeowners do, and we pay for refuse collection through property taxes. So, don't the people who own multi-unit buildings pay for refuse collection both through their property tax and through this fee that we impose? And I understand that the value of a multifamily unit on average is something like $50,000 and the value of a single-family unit on average is $400,000, so just by unit, they pay a lot more. Is that, is that calculated into the analysis in any way?
What I took was the existing premise in the city code and working with Ms. Bray Clay tried to assess whether that fee is essentially recovering what a per household cost. I think she was here during the mid-1990s when, I think she was the deputy director at that time, was actually supervising sanitation, as I understand it. Part of it was just trying to equate each dwelling unit to some semblance of what a per household cost would be for a single-family resident. I think the way the code, Councilmember Clay tries to, you know, accommodate that is that there is not a charge for the first multifamily dwelling unit. So, I think that was a, trying to correlate a multifamily dwelling unit to a single-family household.
Which would be great if you had a two-unit building and not so great if you had a 50-unit building.
Well, we only do pickup for multifamily dwelling units of 12 or less. We do not get into the business of doing high rises and things of that nature.
So, I'm, I guess I'm not crazy about the reduction in library hours and would like to find a way not to, not to further reduce the library hours. I didn't understand, is the reduction of the six hours and the $15,000, is that six hours staffing hours plus eliminating the shelver or is it the result of eliminating?
It is the result of eliminating the shelver.
Shelver.
Yeah, I'm sorry if that was unclear.
Okay. No, I'm sure it was clear to the other people, nobody else is asking the question. So, so we replaced 30 hours of staffing and we reduced by six hours because the other employees need extra time to help with all the shelving duties. Is that the relationship there?
That's correct, and I think, I think the first, Ms. Robbins, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think the first 15 hours that were already part of my initial budget proposal, I think Ms. Robbins and her staff, to their credit, you know, were making every effort possible not to reduce library hours. So, I think the assumption was between other library staff helping with shelving and hopefully getting a volunteer program off the ground, their goal was not to reduce library hours. I think if any additional cut comes, understandably, they don't feel that can be maintained.
Sure. So, I also have a comment about Ethan Allen, should I make that now or wait? Because it's not actually literally on this sheet.
Go ahead with that one.
So, we had originally talked about doing the Ethan Allen funding out of the reserves, if you will, which maybe you changed because now we're going to do $500,000 of the public works out of the reserves, but-
No, the assumption is that most of Ethan Allen would come out of reserves. It has to be a budgeted project, though, in the capital outlay section. But yeah, my assumption would be that most of it would be paid for out of reserves.
So, I read that wrong when I was reading that we're paying for it out of tax revenues this year.
No, the intention was not to do that.
Okay. I read it the same way as you did, so.
You do have to read carefully to get it, but it was there.
Yeah, I think the confusion may be that it shows as an addition, it has to be in addition to general fund expenditures because the project itself has to be budgeted. I think that may be where the confusion arose from.
Okay. Well, so then I guess the sum total of my comments is that I would like not to reduce the library hours by the six hours if we could avoid it.
Councilmember Robinson?
I did a little bit of math on the auditorium rental and it looks like the $10,000, if it was a 50, if we counted 50 weeks in a year, that would be $200 per week. So, I'm trying to think of this space-
Fifty, 50 nights.
Fifty, 50 nights per, 50 weeks per year.
I think that proposal's for 40 nights.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that if we say there are 50 weeks in a year and if there were $200 that this, that this space made every week, that would equate to $10,000 over the course of one year. So, I'm looking around thinking, well, is this space worth $200 per week? And I'm thinking, yes, it's definitely worth $200 per week. I bet that somebody would want to spend $200 per week renting this entire space. In fact, I can envision people wanting to spend more than $200 per week for this entire speed, the space, maybe $300 per week or 500 or 600 or whatever we end up talking about. So, that, I can see that $10,000 being kind of a floor minimum. I don't know if that will take place, but I can envision that.
I think it's a, I think pending any council discussion and having the opportunity to do that, which unfortunately did not happen before the budget needed to be adopted. I think there will be demand, Councilmember Robinson, I think it is a, hopefully a conservative number, but what I did not want to do is give the appearance of just throwing something on a reconciliation list that had no thought behind it.
Right. I appreciate that.
Conservative number, but-
I appreciate that, and I bring out this little mini-analysis just to point out that $200 a week is not a very high bar to achieve for this space if we aggressively market it. market it. I know I've spoken to a couple of people who, when they heard that this space is going to be available with the sound system it has and so forth, they start salivating and saying, oh, my gosh, you mean we could get that space and have our event here and have it be a public event? So I suspect also that there's, that there will be demand for this space. It's far different than it was before, in a positive way. And then, so I'm comfortable with your conservative estimate there. In fact, I'm
Wondering if it's too conservative.
More than comfortable. I'm thinking that there will be more generated, who knows? But I look forward to that discussion as well. And then I look to the library shelver, and Colleen, you're not the only one who has thoughts about the library shelver. And I'm thinking that this is a micromanagement thing that I'm a little uncomfortable with. I mean, I recognize Mr. Burbank's notes about our moral imperative to provide education and job training and so forth to kids and our constituents in the city. I'm sensitive to that. I don't really want to, I think that it's, I'm going to pass the buck to you again, Ms. Matthews, and say that I think this decision about the library shelver is in your hands and not in our hands. And there, the scope of the finances that we're talking about, of moving 500,000 to cover the public works build-out and to, and the scope of the numbers that we're talking about, and then to focus on us having to decide whether we cut the library by two hours based on a few thousand dollars, it's, I think it's out of, something's out of whack there, and I'm uncomfortable with that, making that decision in this context. I'm not going, so I guess like Councilmember Clay, I'm much more comfortable saying, if the library thinks it's a good idea to cut the hours by two hours in order to pursue volunteer efforts to shell books appropriately, I can live with that. If, on the other hand, the librarian is saying, this will be the worst thing that ever happens to cut the hours by two, but you're forcing me into it, I don't particularly want to take responsibility for that. I'm passing it on to you.
No, I will make this perfectly clear. This was not Ms. Robbins' proposal. I think anybody who works in a library would do everything possible to preserve hours. You know, my late mother was actually a member of the library board for the city of Virginia Beach, and I grew up as a library kid. You know, this is one of those things where what I wanted to do was to present something to the council that on paper would close the $300,000 gap created by the reduction in tax duplication payments. You know, a lot of this budget and trying to address revenue losses has been cobbled together by, you know, 15,000 here, $20,000 there. You know, if there is, the majority of the council is understandably uncomfortable with reducing library hours, I'm not going to throw myself at your feet and say, oh, please cut them. I think this is not something that I think, you know, I personally want to do. I think as a city manager, you want to try to provide, you know, services to the community. I think if the council was looking at each of the $15,000 pieces, both from a revenue generation and an expenditure reduction, and saying, you're not comfortable with any of those, I think that's a problem that I think we need to try to figure out where you are more comfortable taking money from.
All right. Well, I'll end my comments by saying, I hope in your wisdom over time that you, over the course of the year, that things like the auditorium revenues come in and that the librarian, the library director and how you treat the library, I don't see here that you're going to cut the library hours from, starting from 12 to 2. Rather, I see that they might be cut.
Right now, with the budget that is before this council on second reading, does contemplate the elimination of the second shelver position, and a vote on the budget that is before you tonight for second reading is a vote to reduce library hours. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that.
Okay, that's good clarification.
The other thing I might just, if I may, Councilmember Robinson, you know, I would agree with you that I think there is a strong possibility we could generate more money from the auditorium rentals. I was conservative initially putting together my proposed budget. We're still being conservative now because I really don't have a good sense of how tolerant the council is to actually charge for the use of the space.
Right, I understand that, and...
So I think if you're, if there is an indication you're more comfortable with that.
Right. Well, that's not what we're covering tonight, though, is it? Or is it?
The budget that is before you does contemplate or assume that there will be an increase in revenue from the auditorium. So all these items, just to be clear on the salmon sheet, are incorporated into the budget for second reading, and based on whatever vote takes place this evening, that is what will get translated into the budget document itself.
Well, I'm comfortable with the auditorium rental increase. In fact, I think it's understated. I'm hoping it's understated, and I'm uncomfortable with cutting the library hours in general.
If I can, Councilmember Wright next, but let me just say that the thought I have is where we might want to go, given what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is that we might want to say that we'll take that piece of what we're considering about the second library shelver position and the funding associated with that, and how that might affect library hours, and delete that from our reconciliation list of the budget, and instead look at something like the assumptions for the auditorium rentals and possibly somewhere else, and say that those need to be increased. We're still going to have those policy discussions about what those might be, and that that might take care of it. So let me just suggest that that might be somewhere we want to go in hopes that if that is the case, that maybe shortens a lot of discussion on it. Councilmember Wright?
So though I am anxious to talk, and I do have ideas, I did notice that Councilmember Schultz pushed the button before me, and number eight lighted it up before mine, so I do want to, and I know I've spoken first a number of times this evening, so I wanted to cede the opportunity to Councilmember Schultz to speak first.
And I was going to say, this technology doesn't tell me who pushed first. It's if I notice it, and I thought I noticed yours first, but I'm happy to go to Councilmember Schultz.
I know the lights went up quickly. I hadn't noticed that one.
We need to amend the technology so that they are sequenced.
I'm sure that'll only cost...
I'm sure that'll cost another $10,000.
Yeah, at least, yes, definitely.
Three subject areas, Barbara, that I want to ask about. One is a clarification on the refuse collection charges and who pays, just to be sure that I understand things, and hopefully any listener will also help get some clarification. If, for example, since I'm a homeowner in the city of Tacoma Park, I can use myself as an example, that if I decided to build a mother-in-law unit with a separate entrance and a kitchen and a bath in my house, that I could rent out to, say, a family member or to just any person, then I would be required to pay this additional $143 proposed rate. Is that correct? Whether I actually, even though, even though if I have that unit and it's registered, and if I don't rent it, actually have any good luck in renting it, or whatever happens, I don't rent it. Nevertheless, I pay that fee because that unit actually exists.
I believe that is correct, unless you can demonstrate that you have some type of separate contractual arrangement for your refuse collection.
So I would have that, I would have that choice if I wanted to avoid that fee.
That is my recollection. You have to show documentation of an actual contract that's in place.
Oh, I see.
I might need to verify that, but that's what I believe the code states.
Yeah, Dan?
Does that also apply to an accessory apartment?
That is actually what I think Councilmember Schultz was alluding to. Yes, it would.
Yeah. That's what I was to say.
It's considered a second dwelling unit at the same premise.
Right. Yeah, even though, see, what's interesting about it, and I'm not offering this as a, you know, a criticism, but if you have a single-family house that has six people in it, and it generates a lot of refuse, and you would not pay the fee, but if you had a household that had, say, a single person in it who has a unit in it, an accessory unit that allows one more person to live there, you have two people generating a third the amount of refuse, but nevertheless, they pay the fee. As I say, that's not a criticism of the system, it's just an observation about how hard it is to come up with an equitable way of charging fees.
Yeah, they're really the only way to get to the issue you're raising, and a community that I formerly worked in, I think, has changed its system since I left, but they went to pay-as-you-throw trash hauling, and it was actually based on how much trash you generated, even at the single-family household level.
Wow. Okay. Well, I don't want to go any further in that direction.
No, you don't.
Not tonight. Oh, Colleen wants me to go that direction. In regard to the bond financing, the salmon sheet here says this would withdraw an additional $500,000 in reserve money. So that's meaning we're shifting, we're using cash instead of bonding, and so our interest rates, since we're a smaller bond, our debt service would be reduced. So my question is, this really doesn't say that's here.
Yes, it will. It will save you. Typically, interest rates are not necessarily tied to the size of the bonds. It's more the maturity of the bond. So my assessment is that we would still stay with a 10-year bond. I don't see using more cash negatively impacting your interest rate at all, and it would certainly substantially reduce the debt service you would pay.
So what, are you estimating, I mean, it doesn't say it here, but since our debt service will be less, that probably it'll be like $50,000 less?
That is the number I placed on the reconciliation list.
Okay, okay. All right, that clarifies that. And then finally, I guess I would just say that I would like to see the, I'd like us, I would support removing the reduction in library hours from this reconciliation. I agree with the other previous comments that that's not a good choice for solving our problems, our shortfall.
Councilmember Wright?
Thanks. First, I want to thank Dave Burbank for his comments tonight and his comments throughout this process. I appreciate you being the voice of the union members and the workers for the city and doing it in a respectful yet convincing way. I appreciate that. So I also am comfortable with most of the things you proposed. I do think we'll earn more on the auditorium than you have here, but I think it's right to do a conservative approach. The refuse collection charges, although like Councilmember Schultz, I think there are problems with the blunt instrument sometimes that is taxation. I have someone in my ward who has an accessory apartment, I think was there when they built the house, and now their mother-in-law lives with them, and they, if, for her to live in that place, it has to continue to be licensed, so they have to pay the refuse charge. Now, if they, if it were an apartment that were attached through stairways and wasn't a separate apartment, and there just had an additional person living with them, they wouldn't pay any refuse charge. But I think, you know, the compromise here is we're not making them, we're not charging the full freight for what would be considered a full household going to 143, so I think it's reasonable. I'm not also comfortable with the reduction in library hours. I think we've asked a lot of the library staff already. I find it problematic to reduce those hours, particularly as David mentioned, during the summer when kids might be going there to get out books to read or use the computer. And I know it would be difficult to suggest keeping it open just during the summer because it probably doesn't work so well with staffing. So I do have two things I wanted to look at instead to potentially figure out a way to bring back that funding, because I, it is $15,000, and we have to find it from somewhere. So I'm not trying to micromanage here, but I do want to try and help come up with a solution for that. So there's an item that you mentioned that you didn't reduce fully from what we had originally potentially suggested, which was the streetlights.
That's correct.
So what was the amount of, because I think there was $20,000 in the streetlights, we reduced it some, so what's...
I left $10,000 in.
Okay, so I would first advocate taking the $10,000 and not putting it towards the streetlights. And if I had to, and I know it's a trade-off, the streetlights do provide light on the street and potentially make certain areas safer, but I think keeping the library open also has the potential to keep a kid on the right path, and that can make it safer also. So I would advocate not doing the streetlights, and that would get us halfway there. The other thing that I would look at is, and a question I have, is is the $10,000 that was proposed to rectify a park issue in Councilmember Robinson's ward in the budget, or is that considered that we would just take it out of the reserve?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. So I would propose, with that and probably the streetlights as well, that we take a wait-and-see approach, that we don't budget that in. Instead, we budget in the library hours. And I'd be very surprised, I know we're cutting things closer with what Councilmember Snipper and I have both referred to as the lapse, but I'll be surprised if we're with your keen budgeting techniques at the end of the year, and as we look at things, if we're not, again, under budget. I don't think necessarily it will be certain to happen, but there, if you looked at history, we're almost always under budget a little bit, so, and then we could look to, as it got closer on, towards the end of the year, if those funds were there, make the commitment to solve the issue in Councilmember Robinson's ward, and also do some streetlights if we need to. But again, it's not that I'm picking on Councilmember Robinson. I more think of, and I know that in my ward, in the past, we've dealt with individual issues. I can think of the house on Park Avenue in particular. But I think when we're trying to make these tough decisions about services, it does seem like the library is something that everybody has access to and everyone benefits from in the entire city, whereas the park correction issue, whatever, however you would call it.
Erosion control.
Erosion control, a smaller number of people benefit, and I think we'll still be able to get it done at some point during the year. So that would be, my proposals would be those two things. I think that gets us to $20,000, which...
It covers it.
It covers it, and we actually, I don't know if we could do, you know, maybe we can do the project for $5,000. It hasn't been bid out yet, or not. And the last question I had is, and I guess we could get reactions to that proposal, is, Colleen asked this, but I wasn't totally clear on the answer. Where is the Ethan, is Ethan Allen in the budget as coming out of the, okay?
Yes. The two projects that, based on the council discussion, we had added were the Hancock, I'm sorry, the Allegheny Triangle project in Councilmember Robinson's ward, and the Ethan Allen resurfacing.
And you could also say, well, maybe the Ethan Allen resurfacing, not as many people benefit, but I think so many of the people in the city drive on that road at one point or another, that the benefit would be widely spread to people. So those are my proposals for how we find the 15,000, and off anyone has to me.
Yeah, if I can just make one comment about, Councilmember Wright's comment about streetlights. I think as the Public Works Director did note, at this point in time, we have no applications pending in the Public Works Department for new streetlights. That can be a very lengthy process with Pepco, so I think since we do not have any applications now, it is questionable in my mind whether or not, unless one comes in very soon, whether or not we'd actually be in a position to even install anything during fiscal year 11. But certainly, we can keep the council apprised if an application does come in from some ward in the city.
If I can just get a third clarification.
I'll do my best.
On how you're, on how we're treating currently both the Ethan Allen proposal and the Allegheny proposal, they have to go into the budget in order to get funded, and where you found the money to do that was taking it from the currently unrestricted fund balance, the appropriate reserves. How is that?
I will do my best to keep this as, Yvonne is laughing at me, keep this as simple as I can. We cannot expend funds on projects that are not included in the budget. So based on the council's prior discussion, both Ethan Allen and the Allegheny Triangle, as you'll note on the reconciliation, expenditure reconciliation was included in the packet. Were both added to the capital section of the budget. When you look, when you look at sort of how deeply we would be cutting into fund balance, as I mentioned, compared to what the budget that I gave you on April 5th, and the budget that is before you this evening, fund balance, unreserved fund balance would be reduced by an additional $608,000. Obviously, that doesn't add up exactly to the combination of the money for the public works facility renovation, the projected cost for Ethan Allen, and then the Allegheny Triangle. the projected cost for Ethan Allen, and then the Allegheny Triangle. Part of that is, since this budget was submitted, as you'll note on the expenditure reconciliation, we had had some vacant positions that we had filled based on either the salary of those individuals that we hired being different from their predecessor or their election of types of health insurance. We actually had gone ahead and reduced personnel costs. So that's why you don't see kind of an equal reduction in fund balance compared to the cost of those three items. Does that help Mayor Williams or not?
That helps.
Apparently not.
It, it helps. I guess my, I asked for the clarification just because my sense was that a couple of us had been thinking, and I'm not sure this was clear in the prior discussions, that if we were going to fund Ethan Allen in particular, that we didn't want to just kind of say, ah, throw in the towel, state you're right, we're going to do it, that we, that we had discussed not wanting to trade streets, that we still wanted to find if there was some way to kind of force the state to do that, and if we put it in our budget, we're essentially giving that up. If we said, well, if we have to, we'll go there and we'll take it out of reserves later in the year by a budget amendment, that that might get us there if we needed to.
I can't tell you how many staff people went back and reviewed their notes, and that may have been the intent, but that was not the direction.
I recognize that.
If the council chooses to do that, what you would do is delete those items. I mean, basically, you know, eliminate Ethan Allen from the reconciliation list, there is no funding in the budget for it. And as you indicated, it would require a budget amendment by the city council to, to actually fund that project.
Which would get us potentially to, it would give us a chance to kind of work that process a little bit more with State Highway and with various people that we might try and convince to make that happen. And knowing that later in the budget year, we could make that amendment if we wanted to go that route. And if we kind of, you know, put that on our little list of things that might be a call on those funds, that it might help us a little bit here on the front end. Oh, boy, now there's three lights up there again. Let's see. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Colleen, did you have your, did you push that or did I not turn it out?
I pushed it.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
So.
And Councilmember Robinson's back, okay.
Well, we'll be.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I would, yeah, I would support what Mayor Williams said about the Ethan Allen and doing it as a budget amendment later for exactly those reasons, and that is my recollection of it. The other thing I was going to say, I guess I have a question. So is the income of the auditorium, is that tied to some non-departmental things? Is it tied to the Recreation Department? Is it tied to the Community Center Fund, and where is that located at? And the reason that I'm asking is because I would follow that up by suggesting that as we increase, that we're looking at ways to increase fees. I know the Recreation Department made some suggestions for increasing fees around field use, but we had had some conversation about there being some capacity to increase fees there. And so I would suggest we group that together between the auditorium and other, other recreation programming fees to look at, at cost recovery across those areas.
From a budgetary and accounting standpoint, the auditorium, any facility rental fees are, show up in the budget and in the audit as recreation revenues because they are the ones primarily staffing the building and.
Right.
So it is accounted for in the way you described.
Okay, so I would make a proposal then that we amend the, the budget so that we remove the, it's a $15,000 item, right?
For which?
For the library.
Yes.
That we remove that from reconciliation on the library side, move it to the recreation side as revenues and let, and let, let you then determine, determine how that's distributed across those budget items, whether you think it's best to recoup, recoup such revenues through the structure of the auditorium rentals, whether it's best to recoup those revenues through changing the structure of the rest of the facilities rentals or how we do those pieces, or if there's, you know, programming that you could add cost to. That's what I would suggest. It's not a lot, it's not a lot of money, and it sounds like you have some of it already, a possibility for some of it already with the auditorium itself.
Yeah, just, just for clarification purposes, the ordinance that is before the council this evening already contemplates $42,000, a $42,000 increase in recreation revenues. Part of that was what the council had previously talked about in terms of room rental rates for this building generally, not the auditorium specifically, field permits in the winter basketball league. I don't necessarily have a problem, Councilmember Clay, with what you're suggesting. I think the question that I would have for the council is how comfortable are you making the rental rates for this auditorium an administrative decision? And I say that with bad flashback moments to the many, many council discussions about room rental rates when the community center was opening. And that was very driven by the council and at the time, not the council, and the policy that is in place bears no resemblance to what staff recommended initially, so.
I thought I supported the staff, you know, if you go back and read the.
Right, so this is an issue of how involved the council wants to be in that policy setting.
But, and also, I'm not saying that it has to come out of the, you know, it doesn't have to come out of those fee structures. There's a lot of places across the recreation.
Yeah, I think there's kind of competing proposals about, I mean, what I'm getting from the council is a clear indication that you're not comfortable reducing library hours. There are different proposals on the table in terms of how restoring that funding should be addressed. And Mayor, I'll leave that to you to.
I got lights to get to, but just to address that for a second. It sounds to me like the, what's on the table that we need to come to a conclusion on at the moment, before we get on to any further conversation, is the, how we, how we deal with the Ethan Allen funding, the Allegheny Avenue funding, the library position, shelter, hours funding, streetlight funding, and the interplay of those, and whether there's something else in terms of the auditorium fee structure or other fee structures above and beyond what's already in your memo to us this evening. Bunch of lights there. Councilmember Sniper.
I definitely support keeping the library hours and the shelter as well. I support paying for it with, by essentially delaying the streetlights and the Allegheny Triangle Avenue, Allegheny Avenue Triangle Park project. I also agree with Councilmember Clay talking about encouraging the city manager to work with the Recreation Department to develop a way to raise the additional revenues that could be raised. In other words, I believe it, I think when we get to discussing how much we expect the auditorium to be used, I believe that the council will have pretty high expectations for how much use it will get. And so I believe the estimates for the revenue from the auditorium are low. I agree with Councilmember Robinson. I think it will be a bit episodic, however, so it will be hard to do an estimate. That is, it won't be evenly spread out, 200 bucks a week or 300 bucks a week or whatever it is. It'll be, you know, kind of ups and downs, and we'll just have to live with that. But I, I think in the short run, I definitely support the proposal to keep the library funding and pay for it by delaying the streetlights in the Allegheny Triangle project.
Councilmember Wright. Wright, Robinson, he was first? We need to spend money on sequential lights. Councilmember Robinson.
The reason I asked to have Allegheny, the Allegheny Triangle, put on at the late date for reconciliation was that it's an erosion issue and a public, I would say a public safety issue because people roar around that corner and maybe traffic calming. But it doesn't fit in any of the categories that our Public Works Director has that she'd normally fund this from, is my understanding. It doesn't fit under stormwater because it's erosion, not stormwater, and it doesn't fit under pedestrian safety.
And it's not a street project.
And it's not a street project. So that's, that's why I kind of threw it in the pot at the very end. And I mean, I'm, I can wait and see what happens mid-year and clamor for a budget change mid-year, but it's a small amount of money, and I would hope that we could leave it in at this point. And just particularly if we take the 120,000 that we had budgeted for Ethan Allen and use that strategically to, and know that we will want to come back to it as appropriate based on state, our negotiations or status with the state. So I'm back pitching for the Allegheny Triangle. And as far as the room rates go and the other rates, I know we have a stellar group of citizens working on the sidelines who will take the responsibility from, you can see I'm in delegation mode tonight, take the responsibility from our shoulders and help us come up with the rates and, and policies that are appropriate, reasonable, market-based to the extent that they should be, and community-based to the extent that they should be.
Councilmember Wright.
So I do think we're probably going to end up as a council wanting to relook at how recreation is provided and, and change some of the cost recovery. I guess including maybe the spaces in this building. But I feel like we kind of made a conscious decision to decouple the recreation decision from the budget decision. So I don't feel totally comfortable, since that, we haven't really been able to have that full discussion and have everyone really hash out all the issues. I don't feel totally comfortable kind of banking or committing us to changing that at this point. It may be that we change it during the year and our budget ends up being better than it is, and it helps us next year. I just don't feel comfortable committing that to, and so I do feel comfortable with Councilmember Robinson's suggestion that, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking, if we don't do the streetlight thing, so we delay the streetlights, we're looking at finding $5,000. And so I feel comfortable leaving Allegheny in the official budget and knowing that we'll, we'll find the, the money somewhere and we'll, you know, we'll do the, we'll still be able to do Ethan Allen if, if we can't convince the state otherwise.
I decided to try the lights.
Yes.
If I may, I mean, what I'm hearing from a majority of the council, and I'm not, I'm not trying to count noses, is that there seems to be a comfort level with not including any funding for streetlights with the understanding that if an application is received, that I will notify the council of the same. I would probably echo what Councilmember Wright just indicated. I think the difference between if that $10,000 comes out and you're talking less than $5,000, I, I don't know that I would be that overly concerned that you feel like you have to get everything down to the dollar. So I'll just make that comment in the, sort of making this less painful for all of you.
So you're saying if, if the, the two items, the streetlight item and the library item get.
They cancel each other out fairly close.
Think of it as a, as a, as a wash.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really impressed with my colleagues on the council here. They seem to be able to keep a lot of balls in the air at once. You've got a lot of different proposals in play here. And I'm shuffling papers back and forth, trying to keep track of all these things. I don't, I don't know that I have done a very good job of that. I just hit on a couple, you know, the, I worry as, as I was listening to Councilmember Sniper talk and about the great outlook for potential revenue for this auditorium, and I, it, for some reason, I had a flashback to speed cameras, and it kind of scared me. We had great hopes for that, too. It worries me since we haven't really had a chance yet for much community input on, on the fee structure for this auditorium and what the, what the plans are for the use of the auditorium. It worries me. I guess at this point, given the budget and the proposals we have in front of us, and knowing that no council decision is in concrete, I guess I will support that increase of, or potential revenues from, from the auditorium. I'm concerned about the, the tree permit fee increases. And I know there's been a lot of concern about kind of our tree ordinance and the cost to the residents of the tree ordinance. And I'm hopeful that an increase in fees isn't going to further erode the value that people place on us and our tree ordinance here in the city. I support the, the refuse collection charges. I join my colleagues in not supporting the decrease of hours at the library. And certainly, I, I really appreciate the, the proposal to use more cash for our public works facility. I think that's a, a good drawdown if we actually do have excess reserves. That's a very appropriate drawdown of it, and I think, I think it benefits the, the residents of the city in more ways than just the immediate need for tax revenues. I flip back to some of the other things that we have on the reconciliation list. I still feel very uncomfortable with the, with the proposed increases in the recreation fees. But I do support the, the removal of the addition of Ethan Allen Avenue. I'd like to not see that in there for right now. So I'm, I'm just having trouble keeping all these things in front of me and trying to figure out, where, where are we really dollars and cents? I mean, we, you know, we keep, everybody supports this and doesn't support that, and where are we bottom line? And we've got to know the answer before tonight's over, right?
Right, and if I could, if I can, before I go to Councilmember Wright, just put something out there that I think I hear us at this point going toward, which is to, to remove the 145,000 for Ethan Allen, to remove from what we're considering the 10,000 for streetlights and to remove the 15,000 for the library funding. Those are the three that I hear us removing from what was in, where we started.
You actually wouldn't be removing the streetlights, you would actually be increasing the reduction in funding from 10,000 to 20,000. So it would remain on the reconciliation list, just at a different dollar amount.
Okay, okay, but I was just going from kind of where we started the evening. Councilmember Wright.
I was just going to say, I'm wondering about your senility. You're talking about chugging balls, and that's the first time I've ever heard you suggest you couldn't follow all the numbers going on.
It's a way of disavowing myself of the responsibility for the budget this year.
Are there other things beyond those three that I just mentioned that people thought they heard? Consensus forming around for anything else that we want to do? Are those items ones that the city manager needs to have us take a short break to see if there's something to reconfigure how this is before us so that we can do this all without kind of saying, oh, well, just take care of it?
Yeah, what I would suggest is obviously there are numbers in the ordinance itself that will be changed based on the agreement you just outlined.
Right.
I do think since you're getting ready to probably do what I consider the most important single act in a year, that you should give Ms. Brooks and I about five minutes, five to 10 minutes.
Sure.
Take a break, let us give you some numbers so that you actually have, someone will need to make an motion to amend.
Okay, and what I might suggest is that we could try another piece of the technology. If you just do this on a little piece of paper and you make it on a copy, we'll roll the side of that thing out and you can put it up there and we'll see it.
You clearly have never seen my handwriting, Mayor Williams. But I can find a staff member whose handwriting. But I can find a staff member whose handwriting is better than mine. We can do this.
You've seen mine. Yours is better than mine.
Neither one of us should be engaging in this.
So, so if, we'll take a short break. You can reconfigure that and I'll roll that out and see if I can get it running and throw the page up.
We can maybe make a 10-minute break.
Sure.
There is a revised general fund expenditure reconciliation list, basically deleting the Ethan Allen resurfacing, deleting the reduction in library hours and increasing the reduction for streetlight installations from 10,000 to 20,000. That results in a revised expenditure total of $22,323,397 for the general fund. We also distributed a revised general fund summary reflecting that same total for general fund expenditures. Changes were made in the, for the library as well as capital outlay. The other figure that's probably relevant to the council on the general fund summary is the, essentially the withdrawal from fund balance has changed to $3,417,680. There is also before you this evening, a revised combined statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The only thing that changed from what was included in the packet are general fund expenditures. And then last but certainly not least is a revised second reading ordinance for the council. I didn't do double strikeouts because that just seemed to be overly confusing. The same numbers that changed were those that were highlighted on the sheet in your packet. What the council, do they need to do an amendment? What, City Clerk and I were just checking, probably what the council needs to do from a procedural standpoint is amend the second reading ordinance that was included in your agenda packet. And the numbers that need to be referenced in the amendment would be under Sections Two and Sections Four. Both totals that are highlighted in Section Two, which would be general fund expenditures as well as the grand total of expenditures, should be part of the motion to amend. The other motion to amend should reference Section Four, which is the appropriation from fund balance.
And Section Five?
Section Five was actually changed in the ordinance that was in.
Previously.
Do they need a motion to amend everything? Yeah, actually, I think this, yeah. Move the amended ordinance. Okay. The City Clerk's recommendation is, Mayor, you're correct, is to basically make a motion to amend from first reading referencing everything that is highlighted.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay. Councilmember Clay would like to make that amendment?
Absolutely. So I move we amend Tacoma Park Ordinance Number 2010-24 with a change to the general fund. So the fiscal year 2011 appropriation now reads $22,323,397 for a grand total in that fund of $24,317,473. And an additional change to Section Four, the general fund, 2011 appropriation now reads $3,417,680.
And?
Section.
Section Five and Section Eight?
Section Five then is amended to read $94,531 and Section Eight amended to read that the stormwater management fund budget is Ordinance 2010-23.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that amendment? Is there any public comment on that amendment?
Yes.
I'll try and be quick. We have a remarkably creative staff and during this whole process, people have passed ideas to me to try and see where the city could save money. I still, I think the library, for instance, is going to find some problems with having a single shover. The shelters don't have paid vacation or leave of any sort and I think we're going to run into some problems there. Councilmember Siemens was talking about, you know, there are a number of balls in the air and I just want to throw a few more torches and chainsaws for you guys to juggle. One idea that the council might look at to save money, if not immediately, but for the future, a few years back, we decided to transfer our code enforcement officers for rental properties to the county, to the county to take care of. We currently seem to pay them, I think, something on the order of $300,000. If they are reneging on their, their commitment to us, to, to pay us a rebate, perhaps we should take back that, those code enforcement officers. We could probably do it for cheaper than $300,000. Another concept that we were looking at is the speed camera funds. I was looking at it as of the March data that we had. It still had $700,000 in the budget, unlikely to be spent by the end of the year. And my understanding is that that is pulling in anywhere between $5,000 and $7,000 a day. I know that that money can only be spent on public safety, but it's entirely possible to fund, for instance, the salaries of all of the, the crossing guards, which would free up some money to allow us to keep two library shelters to, to pay for the front desk staff. Point three, well, this is just sort of on the order of tightening belts. The $12,000 for that other library staff person is equivalent to the council's yearly working trip to Ocean City. I'm just offering that up there. Point four, we're currently in negotiations with the city. We've always had really good relationships with the city management. In fact, as I've been union president, we've never gone to arbitration over any issue, which ultimately ends up saving the city a great deal of money. In this current negotiation, the city, understanding that it's difficult financial times, decided to hire a specialist law group that specializes frankly in, in union busting to some extent. And my understanding is that they, they charge about $400 an hour and probably are billing the city tens of thousands of dollars. It's tough for us to talk about losing positions and salaries and increasing our workload if, on the other hand, we're spending $10,000 to $20,000 to, you know, for this union busting organization that we've never needed in the past for any sort of negotiations. A fifth point, I was approached by a number of senior employees who are, you know, creeping up on retirement age, who said to me, look, you know, if it will save positions throughout the city, maybe the city wants to offer us some kind of retirement package to retire early. And that will save us a little bit of money this year potentially, depending on what kind of package is offered, but certainly would save money in future years. So those are my chainsaws and torches and I hope you can talk about them for a little bit or think about it before you make a final resolution on the budget. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, we're voting on the amendment to the ordinance that's been moved in second.
Was there any council comment?
Oh, your light wasn't lit. Now it is. Go ahead.
Well, the electricity is slow.
Way down at the end.
Oh, it's because the screen is blocking it. Go ahead.
Was that what it's? I just want to say that as we're ready to make this final vote on our city budget for the fiscal year of 2011, is that we are finalizing, in fact, what we're doing here tonight is finalizing the termination of a number of city employees. In other words, we've made this, obviously this is not news to anybody, decisions have been forecasted a long time, but in by, by voting on this, we are actually finalizing that decision and setting it in concrete. And that means that we're going to be losing some valuable employees that have put in some valuable time. And I just think that it's important for us here to acknowledge the, the work, that there's a certain amount of sadness and regret in having to do this, that we're not unmindful of, of that decision because this is an unprecedented, as I'm told, decision in the history of the city, or at least as far as our memories go back, where we're literally, you know, terminating people, not for anything that they've done, but just simply because we can't afford to keep them. And it's an unfortunate turn of events and I think it's just important to acknowledge the quality and the work and to tell them that we appreciate the work that they've done for the city of Tacoma Park.
Thank you. That's a very appropriate comment. In general, I'll just say that I'm not a, I'm not strictly following Robert's rules here. We've had comments on things, but we're, what we're technically talking about here is the amendment to this ordinance. So, any other comments on the amendment before we vote on that? Then we go to one final round of comments for the final ordinance as well. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now we are to the ordinance as amended. Are there any final comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Wright.
Sorry, I forgot to use the little light there. Turn that off. There we go. I want to echo Councilmember Schultz's comments and just say I found this budget process to be an incredibly challenging one because knowing that many of the cuts we're voting for are actually impacting the lives of individuals and trying to balance that with the overall needs of the city and the ability of residents to pay their taxes has been no small challenge and I think everyone has behaved admirably, admirably up here on the council. We've had a good discussion back and forth and I very much appreciate people who've come in and made comments and suggestions on both sides and I think that's helpful in, in the deliberation process. I do want to point out a few things. I appreciate, again, David's comments again. Just because it's public record, I want to be clear about a couple of things. One, the code enforcement amount that we pay to the county is $183,000 this year. I believe that, is that correct? So, you know, significantly less than $300,000 and we, you know, we could look at this again. It was the other way previously and we've, we've found this way, you get, you know, better service overall and, and I think better performance and actually ended up saving the city money. So, you know, that's, that's a challenge. If you did the other way, you'd spend more money and then you'd have to try and find a cut somewhere else, which might mean someone else's job. The crossing guards, I think were actually rebated by the county for the crossing guards. So although, and, and I've struggled and wanted to find interesting ways to deploy the speed camera money that are within the bounds of the pedestrian safety and have proposed a number of times, things that might be pushing those bounds. I think even if we, we could use it, it wouldn't really help us because then the county, the county wouldn't rebate us. I think the retirement idea is a good one. We're probably too late in the budget cycle to look at it this year, but we should talk with the city manager about, about that for future consideration. And then lastly, we did bring in a, a law firm to help us deal with the labor union, not so much in negotiation, but to make sure we under, we had the best counsel representing us related to labor law. And I guess I disagree with the, the comment about union busting. The council actually went to great lengths and asked many questions about this. And there are a range of law firms, you know, they either end up being on the union side or the, the employer side. We did choose a firm that's on the employer's side, but in terms of the range of firms on the employer's side, I think no one really categorized this firm as union busting and I've very, I had very deep concerns about that when we were making the decision and I think we, we chose wisely and I don't think that they, they don't have a bent on union busting that I've seen and they've tried to give us very good solid advice not to go into too much details about negotiations or anything like that. So those are just my perspectives. I, you know, I'm going to vote for this final budget and all its iterations and what we've gone through. Again, I think it's a hard decision, but I think we've done the best considering the situation and I look forward to having a longer constructive conversation over the next year. And I know the mayor's going to lead us in that adventure well. And there's some residents that have already talked about with us about ways you could think about it, but the conversation we really need to have with residents is about services and what, what are the trade-offs that people are willing to, to take connected to, to taxes and, and services. And as I've said before, people will always say, would you like, if you said lower taxes, they'd say yes. If you said more services, they would say yes. And the, the challenge, I think, in, in our situation is to get people to figure out where those two things meet and get them to think about the trade-offs, about what they would either like less of or what they'd be willing to pay more taxes for. And I think that conversation will be very helpful, not only in getting feedback, but I think it will actually be educational to residents because I know our budget is tricky with the, the rebates and we haven't always done the best job in term, I think we've done an amazing job at doing the mechanics and the calculations around our budget. Financially, I think it's without a doubt 100% solid. We always, we haven't always done the best job and the council is responsible for this of helping residents engage and understand what that budget means for them and how they pay taxes and what the, the services they are, get for that. So I think that'll be another benefit of that, that more engaged and longer process we go through in the coming months. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to echo whatever everyone already knows, that this has been a very difficult budget year. I know that it's been difficult not just for councilmembers to make decisions and for the city manager and staff to put together the proposal, proposed budget and, and proposals for reductions, but I know there have been several difficult proposals for staff and I've been party to, to some of those discussions and some of the angst I've probably brought on staff members. I just hope that everybody realizes that when, you know, we've had discussions of maybe dropping our, eliminating our police department or eliminating our library or changes in recreation department, the model that we use or specific employees that have been affected by budget reductions, that this is in no way a reflection of the performance of those individuals or the service provided by the departments themselves. It's, it's a way of trying to balance the budget to provide a, a city government that serves the community in, in the best way possible for the, the least amount of money, especially during this year where money is a serious issue. I'm really encouraged that the mayor has said we're going to follow this up with some very serious discussions about how we can restructure things in, in some ways so that we can be in a much better position to do what the city manager said tonight is, this is the most important function that this council performs and that is to structure the budget for the city government. And so I, I thank David, you know, specifically for coming here night after night and, and making his proposals and sharing his observations. And I, I hope that, that you, you recognize the benefit that, that you've had to the discussion. You have been heard. We do listen to you. And, and I think as with all of us, sometimes it can be frustrating because nobody snatches onto our ideas right away, but I think that over time, your participation in this, representing the employees is, is, has an effect on the council and, and helps to, to shape things for the better of the staff and for the, the council and helps to shape things for the better of the staff and for the residents of the city in the future. So I thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I was trying to think of some way to wrap up my thoughts here on this budget, and the notion I got was the kind of the ship, we're on a ship and we're sailing, and there have been times in the few years that I've been here where it hasn't felt like we've gotten much out of port, but this year it feels much more like we're out on the open ocean, and we're headed across a large body of water, and we've got our crew and our captain, it's not really, it's a captain, it's a couple of captains, and then we're all kind of co-captains on the board, and so it gets a little confusing sometimes. And we look at the, here at the horizon, are storms coming and so forth, but I think that we are, I know that I certainly feel, and I think that we feel up here, that we are in the open ocean and there are storms coming, and, and we're going to have to use all of our skills and creativity to make our way through and get to some other side with the county as a challenge for us, and the state's a challenge for us, and our own finances and so forth. But I'm content with this, with this budget and happy with the process that we pursued, and so I'm ready to vote on it, too.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Thank you. I could say ditto to the comments of my other staff. The only thing I wish to add is I want to thank the city manager and all of the city staff for their efforts in dealing with the budget situation. It's been extraordinarily difficult for everybody. I hear, you won't be surprised, I hear from both sides on any issue, if not three sides on any issue, you know. Like the car guys always talk about the third half hour of the show, that's kind of what I get. You know, I want, there are folks who are, you know, why don't we disincorporate, get rid of Tacoma Park government altogether, and folks who want us to do way more than we're already doing and everywhere in between. It is extremely gratifying for me to see how hard the staff has worked on developing the budget this year in a very difficult time. And of course, the uncertainty going forward is pretty daunting. I am one of those councilmembers who was in favor of raising taxes a little bit. I think taxes are the membership fee we pay for being in society, and that everyone needs to step up to the plate and pay that fee. There are many ways in which the way taxes are done in Tacoma Park could be way more equitable. It's a lot of craziness in how it's done. And the same thing with the fees we charge, there's a lot of inequities in how those are done as well. And I'm hopeful, only moderately hopeful, but somewhat hopeful, that in the discussions that we have moving forward, we can devote some attention to rationalize some of the fees so that they are a bit more equitable and fit the strategic plan and our goals for the city. And I will stop there, 'cause I, too, am gonna vote for this budget.
And I'll say ditto to my colleagues, my council colleagues' comments as well. One thing that I do wanna do in particular is to thank the city manager Matthews and Deputy City Manager Ludlow and Finance Director Brooks for the hard work that you've put in on this in getting us to this point. I really appreciate all of your work, and I know it's been the most difficult year to do it. And sometimes we get a little bit crazy up here, but know that we really value your work, and we value the work of all of our city employees. And I also wanna say in particular to Dave Burbank that it's been really helpful to have your comments throughout this process. It's been helpful to hear from a lot of our employees. We've heard from more of our employees this year on budget than probably all of the years I've served on the council combined. And it's really helpful to know the point of view of people. We may not always be able to accommodate everybody's wishes, but it doesn't negate the value of hearing those things and hearing them throughout this process. And I also wanna take just a second to acknowledge the people who have put in a lot of years working for this city, who as a result of this budget process, won't be working for the city next fiscal year. And to know that we really appreciate the hard work that they've put in over, in some cases, decades, and that it was, it was really a hard process to go through and recognize that we would be having reductions in our workforce for the first time in the city's history through this, this kind of budget process. And we really appreciate everybody's work in getting us to the end of this process, except it's not really the end of the process, it's the beginning of next year's process in trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with all of this, and it's gonna take all of our collective efforts, including all the residents of the city and people who own businesses in the city, and just all kinds of people, to try and figure out where we go from here and how we deal with this new reality. And I look forward to that, but I also look forward to at least a little break from this budget process. And of course, I will be voting for what's before us, and I look forward to working with all of you as we go forward. Any further comments? Okay, we'll vote on second reading ordinance adopting as amended the FY11 budget. This is a roll call vote, will the clerk please call it all?
I didn't hear a motion to, you did the amendment, and I didn't hear a motion to adopt the ordinance after the amendment.
Moved.
It was, wait a minute, it was moved first.
Right.
Then the amendment happened, we approved the amendment to what was moved, so we now have the amended ordinance before us.
Okay, that was a while ago.
Yes, that was.
And hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars ago, yes.
Many pixels ago.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved unanimously. Thank you all, we're adjourned.